Okay, let's call a meeting to order. We've got a lot to cover. Minutes and reports received and filed?
I have the June and July 2015 Treasurers' Reconciliation Report, and then September 2015 Recorder Fees, and 2015 Clerk Fees.
Okay. Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Blue Tiger Athletics Club Membership Drive tomorrow night at Prison Ruse by 3:00, 7:30. Chiefs Meeting Thursday. Got our South Tax Renewal Meeting and KWS Friday morning. And then Fall Festival at Wartsville Sunday. Saturday, let's see, hunt all day. Don't call me.
Don't take your phone. I have a salute meeting tomorrow. And then I guess I'm doing KWS on Friday, is that right Sam?
Right, yeah. Well, I was with Warren, but yeah, it's our Friday to do it.
And then are we off on Monday? Close for Columbus Day?
I guess, I guess.
I don't know, I don't get holidays.
I was gonna say.
I don't either.
What did he do? What Columbus do? Why don't we get that day off? I was just curious.
Significant American history.
You want to make all of our employees work that day?
I didn't say that. It hurts my mouth. I'm just asking what he did. Curious.
Anything Sam?
Uh, no, I think he named just about everything. Sunday, we do have the downtown bridal stroll Jeff, you know.
That's something. I can come now and see all the sad faces.
Maybe you had a new love or something like that?
I do. I love hunting.
Got any camo?
Yeah, we do. I got a couple weddings doing it this week. Okay, we'll keep going.
Sometime's gonna have to have a shot out there today. We're gonna be here awhile.
Bits and contracts, signing a medical bill agreement for EMS.
I've got it.
You got it?
This is what I emailed, Mike and I emailed you all about the other day.
Just changing the names?
Yeah, all it says is a letter setting out to transfer. Well, it was an acquisition of Medsir. So, you just sign it, you're acknowledging that our contract is... Goes along with the acquisition, so, and they're already doing it, so.
Is this, is this just through the end of the year, or?
No, it's an ongoing thing. I mean, it's subject to renewal. Mike, how long have we been with Medsir?
Six years since July-ish of 2009. Or maybe June of 2009 was the last agreement was signed, and it's been ever remaining since then.
And we've always had a good job. They've been good for me to work with, with probate. Keeping all the same personnel. Really, nothing's changing, other than the ownership.
Good with it Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, it was just, it's just new ownership, so.
So it's QuickMed, right?
Yes, correct.
So I move we sign... Was it just, just an engagement letter, or?
No, it's an acknowledgement of the change in business ownership and that we're still
Okay.
Going along with them.
So I move that we sign the contract with QuickMed for EMS medical billing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Signing of the maintenance agreement on EMA copy machine?
Yes, this is the copy machine over at EMS, which Jennifer uses. Mike uses, and Billy.
Yeah, it's under EMA, but it's a collective usage, but I think it's listed as medical bills. Access is under EMA.
We kind of changed the maintenance out. Every other year, EMS pays for it, every other year we do.
In the budget?
Yes.
Maybe we sign a maintenance agreement with KOPI?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of the 2015-34 Uniform Garment Rental Lease Contract. I think we've already approved that.
You guys awarded this last week to UniFirst, and this is simply the contract?
UniFirst?
Yes.
I move we sign the contract with UniFirst.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then signing of 2015-35 Maps, Mats, Mops, Towels Rental Service Contract.
Same thing you guys awarded this last week to the company EraMark. This is just the contract?
So I move that we sign the contract with EraMark.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, renewal for 2014-25 Prisoner Transportation Services.
We bid this out last year, PTS was low bid, and they did not have any increase for this year. So this is just the extension, the first extension.
Okay, I move that we sign the contract extension with PTS for prisoner transport.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
God, we're moving right along.
Long agenda's getting shorter, huh?
Contract for abatement at 3116 Roddeman Lane.
Mike had talked about this last week, you and the guys had agreed Capital Lawn Care. And that's simply the contract for that, to clean up that property.
I move we sign the contract with Capital Lawn Care for the abatement on Roddeman Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. You writing fast enough, Lynn?
Yeah.
Bid award for 2015-43 Propane Provision and Services.
We got one bid from Farrell Gas. I'm not sure why the one bid, we had the same situation last year. And you can see they bid $1.059 per gallon. The recommendation is to award to Farrell Gas. This is for out of public works.
This just isn't an award, or is this a, sign the contract to?
Do we need a contract for that? Because there's no guaranteed amount. Would we?
I'm sure there's gonna be some sort of agreement with them. Don't they have an agreement? What did we do last year?
I don't think we had a contract last year.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we don't, I don't have one now.
Right.
Do we need one?
Debbie, what do you usually do?
Need something, don't we?
Yeah, we should.
Either we just raise the price, or we can just quit paying it.
So is this, so are we locking in X amount of gallons, or?
For the year?
Typically how they do that.
Anticipated 5,000 gallons.
Okay, so that's a locked-in price for the first 5,000 gallons?
Up to 5,000, and then it's market price after that.
Right.
Is that in writing?
Yeah, it's on their bid submission. It's all written out.
I'm okay with awarding it, but I think we need a contract to come back and sign.
We can do that. I don't have it with me today, though.
You guys all right with that?
Yeah.
I move that we award the propane contract to Farrell Gas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer.
Okay.
Why are you running?
Just smart.
GIS Day and National Geography Week Proclamations, and we amended that?
We corrected proclamation. The theme for 2015 is Explore the Power of Maps. Geography Awareness Week will be November, the week of, let me see, the week of November 15th through 21st. And GIS Day will be Wednesday, November 18th.
Or we're gonna do that the week of?
The proclamation?
We usually do that beforehand, and then just.
Why did we approve it, and then we rescinded it last week?
Well, because they had the wrong, they had 2014 in there.
Yeah.
Osage County already approved it at their commission meeting. It was in the, in the anterior.
Oh, well, then we better do it.
I wonder though if they caught that. I wonder if they caught that and changed it.
So Boone County did. Boone County did, and we should definitely do it too.
I'm sorry.
Made a crack about the sheriff.
Sheriff in Osage County, correct.
Yeah, but he's back to work. I don't know if it's ours.
He did come through yesterday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we usually do it ahead of time. Okay, I'm fine with that. I just thought we would do it that week, so.
Do you want to read the, you want me to read it?
No. I'm fine with it. I was just curious. I thought we usually did it the week of GIS Week, or right prior to it. This is a month ahead, so.
And we're gonna have a party too, right?
You never know what we're gonna be doing.
Do we have a cake, or?
That's deer season too.
Maybe I should do some type of GIS presentation or something for GIS.
Yeah, so I, I'm okay with approving this, and I think, I'm like Jeff, I think we should. Well, what do you want to do?
We usually just sign it when we get it, that we can wait if you want.
We can just have it done if you just want to do it that way, if we want to do it and recognize.
Yeah, I say let's just sign it now, and then we, we'll have a party the day of. With balloons and.
You're in charge of that? Sam volunteered.
Let me explain something, Sam, too. When they say flu shots, it's not what you're doing. You got this party, you got flu shots, it's all gonna, it's gonna be a great month.
Oh, yeah. Channel 17 ought to be filming this, this would be.
So I move that we sign the proclamation for Geography Awareness Week and Geographic Information Systems Day.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll have the party later. Okay. Accounts Payable Review.
Can I ask for approval of accounts payable? Unless you have any questions?
I was just getting to the end here.
Thanks Melissa. Sorry I go through that. Nothing's free around here.
So I move that we approve accounts payable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to know how come everybody leaves as soon as they get done, they walk out of here.
Having too much fun.
Mike's app to present abatement hearing 201, 508, 006. Kevin and Melissa Rodgum, 5328 Scrugg Station Road.
Okay, this is a storage unit out on Scrugg Station Road. I spoke with the owner last night, and he is in attendance this morning. Have solid waste, weeds in excess of 12 inches, open structure. Talking with the owner, every time he buys locks, people come and break into them. It's located at the end of Rumsey Lane on Scrugg Station. And violations are present. I don't know what hap, what has happened with the mail. I'm unable to track the information on the certified mail. And Mr. Roddeman says he did not receive the first-class mail analysis. But all violations were still present as of yesterday. And I did talk with him last night at 9:00, and I did not abate my presentation this morning. These are the conditions present on the property out there. Whenever I arrived yesterday, I took the pictures, it was residents of the area were in there going through some lockers, and I do have the license number, which I'm gonna give to the owner. All the units, all the locks are missing. Most of the doors are open, four missing from being broken into. You can see where some people have just brought stuff and dumped it up there on the property. And since the notice was not made, and I did not speak to the owner until last night, I've changed my recommendation to allow him, this is, I'm thinking a couple days to get it cleaned up, but I would say next week, it's time next week.
So week B and after?
I think week B and after.
And we've also talked about possibly blocking the entrance, and he's no longer collecting rents and things up there. Some way to maintain it, keep the gate or something up there.
Put some traffic gate or something up there.
Figure cable.
So I move that we give Kevin and Melissa Rodgum, I assume I said that right?
You did a better job than I did, Chris.
One week to bring the property at 5328 Scrugg Station into compliance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I done?
Yes.
You're done?
Run.
The second one is in compliance.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you Mike.
You gonna leave too?
I gotta get packed up, so. It takes me a little longer to run.
We're just, we're just sitting down.
I'm afraid the computer would disappear if I just ran.
Assessor's Office to present prorated occupancies and commission adjustments.
This is going quick.
I know.
Sorry.
Didn't get your nap in, huh?
This first spreadsheet is adjustments to certified values. Take note of all the fires on here this year. See what Chris was asking for last night. Better Samaritan missions didn't happen.
Yeah, yeah. Now we do, huh?
And, of course, the second one is standard operating procedure on prorated occupancies. We've got quite a few who are adding over a million dollars in assessed values. That's good news.
Yeah. I think all the fires I can understand, of course. This one on Constitution, is that a vacant lot, or?
No, that's a, that's actually a large home. It's, we had a market value of $568,000. We've now inspected the property. It was, it was on the market for...
Quite a long time.
It doesn't project, but it just records.
Okay. What it is, is it was in really poor condition. It's unusual for that neighborhood, but the swimming pool was totally destroyed. The roof had a concrete tile roof on it that leaked. Went into the house. All the sheet rock needs to be replaced, every seam showing. Dry rot around the windows, HVAC was needing replaced. They laid the tiled floor over plywood, and it was all cracked. So, we had an assessment too high on that, if we want to fix that.
And the other one that really, this Casey Bauer property on Capital.
Here again, that property was purchased, and it had, we didn't have knowledge of it, but it was, it was abandoned, broken into.
Okay.
Totally stripped as far as copper, really bad.
Okay. Only questions I had on that?
I don't have any questions on my phone.
No, that's.
Okay. So I move that we accept the adjustments to certified values from the assessor's office.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to accept this, this other one here, as well?
Just, you know, operating procedure. We're adding over $1,000. Sense, sensible.
So I move that we accept the prorated occupancies from the assessor's office.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye. Great, thank you. Are we done?
Other issues?
Yeah, we had transfer for Pringer Center for the food. I don't know if y'all saw that one. We've had issues with that.
Yeah.
I didn't have a chance to call Michael before then, so. Do we have to have that done today, Debbie?
No, I don't think so. Especially since they just missed the last budget.
I'm just curious why we're having an overrun on that again? Because I thought we addressed it each year, and we, I think we've changed it during the budget times. We did bid it, or we tried to get the landlord from the center to do it with it, and I revisited that with Chris. I think part of that was, the price was fine, but we had to get the food back and forth between here and over there, and that was just gonna be more of a pain than anything, so. I mean, we can revisit that if we want to, but we just, we're gonna need to get with Michael.
I did leave him a message, but I guess he couldn't.
Okay.
He was not in to come up here.
Right, so, you want to check into that for us?
So is that, I mean, that didn't include the meals, or, I mean, are we gonna be over budget for the next three months on this, or?
Well, I'm gonna say he was budgeted 43,000. He has 3,300 left right now, so I'm sure, I'm not sure what, how much that one was, that he's asking.
$500 for food? Or no?
I think he's asking for 5,000, 5,000 total.
Yeah, I guess this is.
I know Sharon invoices over the amount already that she has left in there, so she doesn't have enough currently to pay the invoices that she has.
3,000 or 1,500 on there?
3,000.
That's all that I saw on that one.
So he's transferring out of others into food, basically $3,000, is that right?
I don't know, I didn't really.
Transferring out of meetings, mileage, supplies and vehicle expense into food.
I mean, if we've had more kids, and we've had more meals and stuff, that's fine, but we've.
Well, she has built more than that at the moment, because she couldn't enter a mobile.
Oh, I see.
Okay, yeah, let's get Michael up here and talk about it.
Just figure out what's going on with it. Then we got the minutes from last Friday. Chris, you were absent on that one. Part of the thing in there that I disagree with is the discussion. I didn't have a discussion, but we have to have it in the minutes somehow. I'm not gonna sign them if they have anything in there about the discussion from 9:22, vote that was taken for the emergency procurement. So, do you all want to discuss this today, and then you can put in today's minutes? And then you got somebody to sign it, and we'll just strike it out of this minutes from the 25th. It was about the garage door, which I don't disagree with it being an emergency procurement. I just have a disagreement about having to go out of session to take a vote on it, to make an emergency procurement, so. And it may be something stupid, but I get that way once in a while. Kind of stubborn about things. So, just with these minutes here, we need to get them back to the clerk's office. So that's why I thought we could take that, take the discussion part off of there, if you want to.
Well, we had, we had gone into closed session, then we came out of closed session, and Chris and I.
And we stood in recess until 4:30, because that's whenever I got out of here. Because I was fine with voting on the emergency procurement during session while we still had session in session. But for it to be in emergency procurement, we were advised that we need to not be in session. Needs to be on the phone, or a meeting, so.
Well, there's two issues here. One thing would be if you were in session and it wasn't on the agenda, you would be violating the sunshine law. 24-hour notice and not putting it on the agenda. The other is that the statute for emergency procurement does not require that you be in session. It simply requires that in your next meeting, you announce what you did and what the vote was. And there's a statute.
I know, we, we'll just have to disagree on that, because on the agenda, if it's an emergency, there's no reason to go out of session to have a talk and discuss it and vote on it out of session. That's where I disagree with, that we were in session, so.
Other than knowingly violating the sunshine laws.
It was an emergency, so we can bring it up under other stuff. If they want to see me, let them see me.
Whatever.
That's, I'm saying, we're just gonna have to agree to disagree. I mean, this is all recorded. If they're listening to me, they want to see me, there it is. I would, I would love to see it. Because if it's an emergency, it's an emergency. Why are you gonna go out of session to do it? Doesn't make sense. That's like wiping before you poop. That's all I got to say about it. We can take the discussion part off of there, and then we can have those minutes, and then I'll, I'll sign them. That we did do the contract, and then you can put the discussion on today's minutes if you want to. Since you all are here, and y'all can discuss it.
That's fine. I mean, we can, we can correct the minutes to get them signed. We can talk about today that, that we had a, you know, we had a discussion on, on the emergency of the jail doors, you know. I mean, Sam and I did talk about it, and so.
You know, we've got one door out of service.
I don't disagree with the ban of emergency procurement. Don't get me wrong. I agree at 100%, but we were in session, and to go out of session to talk about it is probably a violation of sunshine law as much as anything. So, that's where I'm at with that. I just wanted off those minutes. I will sign those minutes. That way the clerk's office can get their minutes done. And when we just, if you just want to add that to today's meeting, then.
That's fine.
I'm fine with that. We'll just get it done. Otherwise, that could sit out there in space forever.
So just take that paragraph off of those minutes and put on today's.
So what do you want out of there, Jeff? I mean, just that we had a discussion?
Yep, just the discussion part. Basically, for that meeting that day.
So basically, you just want to say that we voted to declare an emergency procurement for the jail doors?
I don't know how anybody voted on anything if we didn't, we weren't in session of some sort.
Under the emergency procurement law, or, oh, statute? We can do it by phone, in person, however, and then we just have to report that at the next agenda.
Which is what we did on Friday.
I just, I guess I don't understand it. If I'm somewhere else, and you can't get me here for a meeting, you got two people to go ahead and do it. You can come up here and do a meeting. Anytime we've had any other emergencies, we've come up here, and we've done it. Renslake, when we had that, we came up here and we did it. We had session. We've got it out there that we are in session every day from 9:00 to 4:30 for administrative issues, or for whatever issue. So we can come up here every day and bring up emergency issues. Even though it's not on the agenda, I, and I'm not attorney, but I would challenge anybody to find us doing anything illegal when we're trying to take care of something in an emergency like that, so.
I understand your argument. I was going on our legal advice from our attorney.
Yep.
I'm not an attorney, so I have to trust her.
I will respectfully disagree with her.
So.
I just was trying to get this put aside, and done so the clerk's office can have their paperwork. We can have it in the paperwork, like Jill said, we'll put in that y'all had a discussion. I was fine with it. Y'all had a discussion after we went out of the meeting in the recess. And y'all can say that y'all voted. I'm gonna say I wasn't present, because I walked off at that point. Because I didn't agree with it, and, so. There wasn't, it was more or less a procedure than getting the doors. I agree that the door needs to be taken care of, so.
Okay, so if we take the discussion part out of there?
Take it out here, add it to today's minutes.
That we, that we just, so that, we'll just say that we voted on emergency procurement of the door?
And just put that I was absent, so.
Fine.
Okay.
No, I wasn't. No, Chris and I voted.
I was absent. I was.
Said a no accent.
I stomped off and took my ball and went on.
And it said that you were absent in, in the vote, wasn't it?
No, it had no. And it's not that I voted no.
Right.
I just, so.
You weren't. So you were absent in the vote, and then you'll sign.
Jill told you how to put the discussion part in there. I'm just not gonna sign it. I had to discuss it, because I think I walked off when we started discussing. Three more years, Sam.
Hello.
I don't think we need to add anything to today's minutes.
Oh, just correct it on here.
Yep.
Don't take the discussion off of these minutes?
Yes, take the discussion off of those.
And put them up today.
Well, they gotta be on.
Well, they have to be on one. That's the next, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to be on.
So in today's minutes, it should say that, that Sam and I had a discussion on the emergency procurement of the door at the. So, in today's minutes, it should say that, that Sam and I had a discussion on the emergency procurement of the door at the law enforcement center prior to a vote being taken.
Yeah, however it was worded in there, and it, um, nine twenty-two, I think, is when y'all discussed it.
Yes.
And I was absent, y'all voted to do it, so.
I'll try to do the changes in y'all.
That's fine.
Okay.
It may go through about six or seven more times, but it is coming off of that, and going on today, so. All right, then the other one that was on there, and then we took it off though, that I wanna talk about, is, I guess, procedural, we're gonna change something with accounts, what was it, accounts payable? Well, office supplies is the one that brought it up, so if we're gonna change something, we're gonna have to have all changes come through the commissioners before we make a change, and we're gonna have to have it. Debbie wasn't here that day, Kristen said they was gonna try something, so they were gonna try it. I just wanna make sure we got this all taken care of for future things like this, so. Do we need to change that one, is it still changed?
It's changed.
Where each department's gonna do their own?
Right, Melody was creating an invoice, but in the past, people would sign it and send it back, and then Karen entered it all. Well, I had three or four departments that entered it themselves, so instead of voiding those, we thought we'd try letting all the departments do it to see how it worked.
Okay, and then Debbie's concern was that if we do that, that they're gonna start just coming down here and getting stuff, and next thing you know, it'll be over budget, and, so, are you all right, try this for a little while and see what happens?
Sure. Sure.
Or do you think it's just gonna cause a major problem?
No, I can try it, I just, it wasn't that, it was just, it wasn't a collective decision, and I know we used to do it that way, so that's the only input I wanted to put into that.
Okay, well, I'm just keeping these two separate issues, first on the office supplies, is, are you sure you're okay with, let's try that, is that gonna be a big deal, do y'all?
When we did it that way before, did, did we have problems, or?
Yeah, because at the end of the year, they wouldn't get their transfers done, they wouldn't pay the bill, and then the auditors kinda wrote us up, because there were still outstanding invoices that happened here, that we didn't get paid in this year's budget, it had to be paid in the next year's budget. Because some of our department heads, just, and elected officials, just said, well, I don't have to pay that bill, I'll pay my other bills, and, you know, 'cause they're the ones entering it, they can choose not to pay that one in the year that it was due and wait till the next year, that's why we converted back to us entering everybody's.
What's that difference, what's the difference between that, office supplies that they're getting from us, that we know that they're not paying for, I mean, we kinda track that.
What, 'cause we're the vendor.
And if they go to, I don't know, X, Y, Z and get something, and they say, well, we're just gonna hold this one till after the first of the year, we'll pay it on next year's.
They're gonna pay. They can't do that too, but they're gonna get more pressure from that vendor, I think, than paying us back, but. Late fees, yeah. We'll try it and see what happens.
Okay, well, I'll just keep an eye on it.
Okay.
And then in the future.
And at the end of the year, if we have, if we have problems, then we're gonna say, no, we're, go back to.
Yeah, yeah, and we want people to use this office supplies, we'd rather, 'cause we get pretty good discounts, we don't want them to go to Staples, we don't want them to go every other place in the county, we'd like them to, you know, use this, so. And we have a different set of elected officials now than we did when that went on, so maybe that won't happen.
Another thing I was gonna mention, it's a lot different than, than that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
Our auditor is actually one of them, so, but on these procedures, next time, let's talk about it before we make a change, that way everybody's on board, and that way, somebody.
And we'll look at it at the end of the year, and if, if people aren't paying, then we.
'Cause it's a short timeframe, that's the only thing, and there's lots going on, because most of them are gonna be out of money.
I'm gonna basically tell you two to go in the room and figure out which way's gonna be the best for us in the end.
And that's all I want, is to have a.
Unless y'all, I don't care if y'all got arm wrestles, see who wins.
You, you can use my office and drink some of my bourbon too, if you want, you know, 'cause I always.
Well, if y'all are gonna have that kinda meeting.
Jeff wants to be included.
Well, I just gotta say, don't do it here. Kinda problem, man, really. So, all right, so we all got some guidance on that stuff, just, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with trying that the other way.
I mean, yeah, we have done it that way before, that's all I'm saying.
Keep us informed then if it, if we have problems with it.
Okay, yep.
Cool, I think that's all I had.
I do have a couple of you guys.
Is it on the agenda, Debbie?
Well, it, it was, old business.
Dang it, all right, I'm just messing.
Okay, well, two things, um, Donnie Schulte talked to you guys about using his part-time money for the rest of this year, for that, um, for that program he's doing with the lady who works for Circuit now, he just wants to know if he sends over a pay form, he has enough money in his budget this year, are you guys gonna have a problem with it? Or do I need to bring Donnie back over here to discuss it again?
So, it's just till the end of this year?
Yeah, yes, well, and he'd like it to go into next year's budget, but what he's gonna do.
He'd like to go in, yeah.
Where's he got money left over from?
Why does he have money left over?
No, where was it from, or what was it, I'm trying to remember the discussion.
Well, it's part-time money, and it was about the, um, shackling program and the new way of doing that, I guess. And so this lady could keep track of it, so she could give us some statistics on whether this program is really beneficial.
He has money left in his part-time budget, because it's hard to budget for him, he only uses the part-time people when he has a trial, or somebody's off.
Oh, okay. When y'all have the big trials, so it's some.
Yep.
So, he does have extra money in there currently.
I would prefer to add this to next year's budget discussion, um, 'cause I know what's gonna happen, he's gonna try to turn it to part-time for next year, and keep it.
Well, definitely, I mean, he does have money this year to do it, do you not want him to do it for the rest of this year?
That part-time money was for the trials, right?
Yes.
And if he's using this money for the shackling, I'd rather him come over and say, look, we're doing shackling, we're saving the county this much money, because we don't have people in jail sitting there, and you're not getting paid, because they end up getting released anyway, or for whatever reason, we don't get reimbursed, so we're saving money, we need to add a person, and justify it that way.
He's trying to get this girl to help him get you those numbers, so.
He can get us a number after we give him the girl?
Well, he's saying that the two people he currently has don't have time to put together the information for you, so that he's trying to get this girl to show you how much you're saving, he did request this part-time position in next year's budget already.
So, it may be beneficial to go ahead and let him have this person, so we can know by the time next year comes whether it's worth it or not.
For the two months, and, yeah.
So, on December thirty-first, if we decide it's not worth it, we're gonna tell her, she's going longer with us?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
That just doesn't usually happen that way, though.
I mean, I'm, I'm kinda with you, you know, and, and we've told a lot of people no, um, on adding more help, but in this instance, the more people that were getting out of jail that aren't a huge risk, the more it's, it's saving us dollars, um, so, I mean, those positions.
Well, they've got the money in the budget, two hundred part-time, it just wasn't for that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to have him come back sometime, give us a report on, but I know when he and, and Lee came over, yeah, it was, um.
We're for sure not gonna dip into that, this year, will there be more trials coming up, but?
The way it sounds, no, I would think they'd have it all planned out by the end of the year, for, big trials, that is, I can ask Donnie, but he said there'd be no problem having that money available for this year.
All right, I just don't, coming up November, well, we're gonna need some part-time money, because we had a couple of trials, and.
Well, we might, let's, let's make a contingent, check with them, make sure they don't have any, and I got the arson trial done, so I don't know what they have.
I mean, I just, I know we've tried to keep our FTEs and part-timers down, but at the same time, you know, as we, as we move forward and that jail continues to fill up, you know, we're gonna have to look at creative ways to maybe use that other floor of the jail, or, or do some other things, uh, work release, or, or something else, just to, um, keep people employed, you know, even though they mess up, keep them employed, and keep them in a job, and get them out of the jail, um, so. Anyway, I just, I think they've done a great job, Richard's done a great job of, of doing those interviews and getting those people out, and it's, it's saving us more than his, what we're paying him.
I think it's a good alternative, uh, to keeping them locked up.
I don't disagree with that part, we just, we've got the budget money, and we make everybody stick to it, so that's why I was holding him to it, um, I'm fine with him using the part-time money for it, 'cause obviously, he's got the understanding that after December thirty-first, that it may not be there for that, so.
And we definitely need some reports from him based on, by the end of the year.
We'll be looking at adding the part-time next year for the shackling program, and, I mean, the sheriff added the part-timer for the concealed carry.
CCW.
And that actually had money coming in too, so.
Right. So, we're all good with that?
Yeah, let's, let's, just make sure he knows till the end of the year, and give us some numbers.
Yeah.
No, I have one more, it's a, it's a part-timer too, and I'm not sure whether Ralph left, but the recorder's office, you know, came to you guys about hiring a part-timer for that office, the way I understand it, I don't know if he's talked to any of you guys, but he's willing to pay that out of his recorder's fund, he believes that's where the money should come from, 'cause this person is gonna be doing, not relieving his people for vacation and sick time, but on a specified project of scanning certain documents, that he wants to now put in archives, and he said it's gonna be twenty hours a week, and he, um, he's willing to pay that out of his recorder's fund. So, what I'm asking of you, if you want me to go ahead and start with Jill, with a memorandum of understanding from that fund to our fund for this particular part-time situation.
So, my answer is really no, um, just because I thought we got away from all these MOUs with the, with the prosecutor and everybody else, the clerk had some stuff, and I thought, at the end of the last year, going forward, we absorbed a lot of those costs, and we got rid of all those MOUs.
And the MOUs, definitely we did, we got, um, but the ones we really got rid of was ones that we picked particular people, and we gave them a salary supplement, versus a department who's willing to pay for a whole position, a half position, you know, to me, in my mind, that's a little different than having a memorandum of understanding for a salary supplement for particular people. So, again, it's up to you guys, um, I was under the impression that he had talked to you guys about this, and that maybe you guys were okay with it coming out of the recorder's fund, so we can, again, table this and have him come up next Tuesday if you want. I'm not sure what he asked for in the budget for next year.
I don't like the MOUs, we finally got rid of them.
I think it's helpful when they have a fund like that, if they're willing to pay for the whole thing, I don't think we should be splitting.
Do we still have one with the prosecutor?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do, for a whole position.
I think you probably should do some sort of MOU with the sheriff, from sheriff revolving also, just to spell out the terms of what he's paying for out of the conceal and carry money, um, it would be nice to have something in writing there that specifies he's gonna pay for the total salary and benefits, or, you know, something giving us some guidance as to exactly what we're budgeting out of each one.
So, is this just till the end of this year, or is this gonna be a, an ongoing next year also?
Well, I think he wants it ongoing, but this memorandum would just be for the remainder of this year, and to me, I think we should keep him that way, and then start a new one with a new budget. Just kinda the way we did them before, was by calendar year, we never had come up in the middle of the year like these two have. And maybe you want him to say his piece on why he actually needs this, again, it's, he, he said it's not for what he had asked for before, he's still going to ask for that, as far as the, for us to pick up the part-time, and to relieve his people, you know, for vacation, sick, whatever, but this one would be have a specific scanning job that he wanted done.
So, he's actually asking for two?
That's the way I understood, for next year, not this year. Did he not have it in his budget request?
He did have one part number in the budget.
Yeah, keeping that there.
I just, I just think it's a slippery slope, I, I just don't like it at all, I, I don't like the MOU with the prosecutor, you know, these slush funds are just, they're not good, they, uh, they allow people to do things outside of, of our control, and, uh, I just, I don't think it's a good thing to start all over again, 'cause we'll end up in the same spot we were with people wanting to do salary supplements and everything else, I just, um, I mean, if.
I wonder what you're gonna accomplish in this short a time, you know, seven weeks, is he gonna get a lot done in seven weeks with a part-time person?
If all you're doing is scanning, I mean, I guess you probably, you know, and the rate of pay, he told me what he wanted to pay, was based on his full-time rate, so, but, obviously, no benefits, but, we have part-time rates kinda all over the board, so.
I mean, truly, if, if we acted like general revenue was our fund that we could do with what we wanted, you know, where would we be today? I mean, that's in essence what we're allowing them to do, and I just, I don't think that's right, I mean, if they have excess funds, they should give it back.
Most of them say that it rolls over from year to year, and they get to carry it forward, and it earns interest on its own.
Well, I, I get that, but I mean, if they're getting more money than they need, then they should give it back.
His, his fund is one that we have seen a drastic increase in, because prior to, they were paying for a full-time position plus two salary supplements, and then they have not been paying that this year, so his fund has seen a large increase.
And you could always, I mean, you know, different funds are designed for different reasons, like this is for record preservation, um, you could always hire that out versus hiring an employee here, you know what I mean, a contract service like microfilming, hire it out somewhere else, versus hiring a person here and letting us do it, there are ups and downs to all of that, so he could probably explain that as well.
I know he's, you know, there's a transition between Larry Roddeman and Ralph, so I know he's, I think, probably trying to bring it more into the twenty-first century than, than maybe what it was, so.
The nineteenth century.
So, so, I, I don't know if that's where this is, is, is part of it, so I think it, I can, I can see what he's, what he's doing, trying to do.
Well, I think it is, some of this. 'Cause he said it would make it easier for the public to access it, and, uh, property research people to access, whatever documents these are. So, I just, I mean, I can have him come up next week, and we can talk about it again, just 'cause, I'm not sure, I assumed he already had done some interviews, so, before I know about that.
So, where are we at with that, I mean, if we say yes, we'll run it through our payroll, and they pay the full amount, if we say no, can he go to a temp service and do it anyway?
Um, a temp service, probably yes, um, could he hire and pay that person himself, no.
If he paid through a temp service, though, he could.
Yes.
And they'd.
A temp service, depending on whether we go over the forty-five hundred dollars within the ninety-day period, would still be an issue.
Right, but I'm, I'm just asking, you know, could he go out and, and run through a temp service and, and do that, but, so it basically, it'd have to be a bid service or something, if he wanted to do that.
And I'd still like to check, because if this is a continual thing, and we're directing this person's work in all aspects, technically, they are an employee of ours, it, it just walks a fine line, if you know what I mean, with, with IRS says.
Well, I get what you're saying, I, I just asking what he could, he could do, I mean.
If it's, if it's definitely temporary, yep.
I think there, you're, you're paying enough charge, though, for the service, I mean, if, if you think that he needs the person, it would benefit us to pay it ourselves.
I, I get that, so.
Yeah, maybe we ought to do it till the end of the year, just, I mean, that, that's, yeah, I mean, this person is just gonna be a temporary person, but I know, I know Ralph's done a wonderful job on, on, uh, redoing that office down there, so I think, you know, I'd like to give him as much support as we can, but, you know, it's just till the end of the year.
Well, let, let's get him back up here, and I can bring him to the next agenda meeting, and then, um, he could maybe explain that, if he really feels like he can get it done, and how much of a time for him, and what exactly he's doing.
Especially, 'cause it's a really short window, it's just kinda, I don't know how you're gonna find somebody that wants to come work for a month and a half.
Then we eliminate the position down there to pay the other ones more, and now we're gonna go hire somebody, because you don't have that position, so, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me on that part of it.
Well, when Roddeman was still here. Well, when Rodman was still here, he had a whole position he was paying for, and that was one of the memorandums. And then the other memorandum was that an employee was working thirty-two hours and wanted to come up to forty hours. So the eight hours worth of difference, we made him pay for in that memorandum of understanding. There was one individual lady that did get a salary supplement, if you want to call it that, that position, or that lady's no longer here.
So he's got the same number of staff as Lynn.
He has one less full-time person.
He does.
Okay, one less full-time.
And it's been one less for over a year. Maybe even getting close to two. It was a whole year Rodman was here without that extra position.
But didn't they adjust the others once they eliminated that or not?
The only really adjustment, maybe when the new hires came in, what they were making, there was a little bit extra money to, to do that with, the new hires coming in. But I don't remember any other supplements.
I don't think we divided anything out. Because that full-timer left in the middle of the year. It was not.
But I do.
And he was paying it fully out of the other fund.
Well, we did some different things with LV's office. I mean, he eliminated a position.
Right, right, right.
And he did some more money, and they had more duties and stuff, but.
Yes, his, we did. I don't think the recorder's.
We did that to Health Department.
Yeah. I think the starting salaries were.
I was thinking Larry's would get something over there to recorder back then. Because that's what doesn't make sense, is we're going to eliminate a position, you give the other more money, and then they come back in a year or two and say, oh, well, now I need this person back, and everybody got the other salaries locked in. It is different than paying that supplemental salary. I, I didn't like those at all. If he is indeed paying it out of his own fund for that person. I don't know, if he wants to come up here, I guess we just want to have him come up and talk about it.
Yeah, just, just have him.
Next week, I don't think.
We do on Wednesday.
We do?
Yeah.
That's all I had.
That's why I still want to, yes, let me see.
Yeah. I think we've also got Senator Blonschoff, who's going to do a listening post here from like eight to eight forty-five. I tried to talk him out of that. I said, why don't you do it in the afternoon?
So this transfer. To probate? What's that?
By statute, we have to pay all the probate fees that the judge signs an order for us to pay. And that is a very hard account, up and down, and, and I think. Kristen, you actually went over and talked to the judge, didn't you, about why it was so high this year, or did you?
No, we didn't. We just pulled and tried to compare last year to this year, but it fluctuates from year to year.
Up and down, all over the place.
Yeah, because that's the second transfer already this year. I mean, I don't know. I know there's lots of poverty people out there, I guess. I don't know what actually qualifies for them to. But if a judge signs an order, the way I understood, I have to pay.
He can sign one for me. That kind of.
You might have to make some kind of arrangements over there.
I'm not the boss, does that count?
No.
All right, I'll try it.
Did you guys get this letter from Barbara Martin?
Yeah, it's still on my desk.
Is it?
I think, were we CC'd on that? Did I go to the?
Yeah, I don't know.
Donnie or?
It was, I'll pass it along, but she was concerned over the way we treated jurors. And it's like a five or six page. Anyway, I'll forward it to you. I mean, did you get?
Yeah, I got that, and I actually, I'd say.
That's not a county issue.
I went over it with Jill, and we sent it over to Mr. Riley.
You guys pay for all the jury.
I know, we pay for it, but that's a state process.
Definitely a state process.
If they want, if the state wants to pay us to buy some property for the parking lot closer, we'll be glad to do it.
Or buy a trolley.
Trolley, yes.
Yep.
I don't disagree. I mean, my, my mom hobbles around quite a bit. She had a park down there at the bottom of the hill. I told her, said, she'd park up there in a handicap spot, but she'd do stubborn.
Like mother, like son.
That space is used every day.
And, and I've told Riley, if, you know, if somebody requests special needs or has, you know, we should accommodate. I'm not sure what they're told when they come for jury duty.
Do we, do we pay for those spots down below the hill?
City buses use those.
They let us use them for?
Yeah.
Yeah, since we're trying most of their cases.
Okay.
I mean, if there's some way that we can.
Well, I was going to say, the Baptist convention, you know, has, they got more spaces you can shake a stick at, but we'd have to pay them. But that would at least be.
The problem there again is knowing when we're going to need them and when we're not, because, I mean, a jury trial can go off the day before, so.
Well, and when they do, the, the whole group there together, there could be over a hundred people coming along, you know, so it's kind of.
I don't know, if there's some way that we can help them or do something, I mean, that's, that's fine, but really, all of that is through the courts, so.
You would, you would think that as many buses are running around empty that they might be able to assist, but.
Well, I, I.
Jeff trained.
I, I think that a lot of this comes from, from over there. They keep telling them, we took the trolleys away. And so every now and then, because there's a lot of stuff in there that.
Yeah, I think it's the communication that goes on that we don't hear.
Yeah. So anyway.
Okay. Did you guys get this invitation for this Amaran?
I did. That's the day where I'll be coming back from Mac.
Oh, is it? I hadn't looked at it yet.
Down at the lake, but.
Is it?
So I didn't know if.
That's during deer season too? What is wrong with people?
They do that every year.
Well, Mac is a week earlier.
Yeah, Mac's actually opening weekend now.
It's a week earlier.
What's, when is that? I thought that was end of October.
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday, November seventeenth, or Thursday, November nineteenth.
Seventeenth is at Meadow Lake, and the nineteenth is at.
Four Seasons.
I've gone to one of them before they are fairly interesting.
Yeah.
If you can go. I don't know if I'm going to make it to one of them.
That's fine, I just thought it, bring it up. I didn't know if you guys got it.
Yeah, I got that. And then I also got a letter from DNR. St. Francis Xavier Catholic Church Historic District is being considered by the Missouri Advisory Council on Historic Preservation for Nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. Listing in the National Register does not place restrictions or limitations on the use or maintenance, maintenance of a property. But the meeting is Friday, November sixth, so I just.
Any action required from us?
Nope.
Yeah, if they want to do it, I'm okay with it, but I don't really want to force them to do it or whatever, so.
No.
All right, so Amaran, I'm going to go ahead and toss that one. Are you going to RPC, Minmo RPC Annual Dinner?
Yes.
Okay, that one's during deer season too? So.
On the board of directors there.
I know, I saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one I'm not, that one I'm not sure of yet.
I need a camel coat too for deer season. That one will be dressed for success.
Like the one I wore the other day for.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I need one of those. Then our delegates for the MAC conference, you just want to.
Yeah, I think we just want to sign up.
Are we going to sign it?
Or let me know.
Put the names on there?
Yeah, we'll put the names on it.
Then y'all need another sheet?
I don't.
You'll take care of that, please. Would you have all the elected officials? What, we got twelve elected officials? So we'll get ten spots, so who are we going to leave out?
Well, I'm the mechanist.
Let's just send out an email and see who would want to do it.
Who wants to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't remember seeing everybody there for that.
No, I don't think everybody usually goes to go.
Sometimes when there's an important issue for their office or something, they'll show up, but that's about it.
Because we only get ten.
Anything else?
Anything else to come before us?
Maybe we stand in recess till four thirty?
Second.
All in favor?
Hey, Chris, those two were out there yelling.
Okay, yeah.
Quick?